I'd like to call the meeting to order for Frontier at 6:04.
And for Union, Joint Committee, at 6:04. Amazing.
For Frontier, I'd like to approve the minutes from June 18, 26, and the 17th for Frontier. Does everybody have any questions at all about the three? For Frontier? If not, somebody make a motion, please.
So who? Second.
All in favor for Frontier? Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as corrected. For June 18, June 26, and July 17. On July 17, I have Peter erroneously listed as absent.
So move.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
I mean, it's tricky. You got me down as a non-voting member on this July 17. Then that's not correct. I was a voting member.
And again.
I mean, I don't really take it.
Oh, that's where it was. I had you in three, two places. So I moved you up. That was the correction I was looking to make. I had you, I also had you absent as a voting member.
Right.
So we're putting you in as a voting member present on July 17. And eliminating you from the other two of those would be the corrections. So that's your concern.
And also on the one of June 18, you have made the same thing. You're not a non-voting member and I was voting.
Were you then, by that point in time you were voting?
Yes.
Okay. Make those two corrections. Any further limitations? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you.
Any public comment tonight from Frontier people or chairman people?
Yes, I'm assuming no public comment because we're all committee members here.
Gary, is he going to give us an update on the business manager search?
Sure. Thanks for being here. For those on Frontier Committee, they got the windows out in the library. They've started that since it's all scaffolded off in there. So we've got that second thing that you approved, I believe, in May to move forward on. So in regards to where we are on the agenda, we did put a quote out to four people regarding contracting for services for the school business manager. I heard back from three people, one of them including the management solution, which you have a copy of their, I guess you could call proposal. It's not a contract proposal based on what we sent out as a scope of services. And so what I am looking for tonight is I recommend that we move forward with the management solution for a three-month contract. And at the October meeting, is a joint meeting at this point in time, we review if we looking to extend it another three months. We can go up to six months before it has to go out to a general bid. Okay? Because it breaks a $50,000 point. I've had conversations with several people. I think that unless it's a complete mess in the first three months, it's not going to be realistic that we're going to be able to, in three months, get schools started, get a new business department up and running, and also conducting a search. So I think realistically, unless it kind of goes south, I think we should put a hold on the current search with the applicants who have applied. Know that we'll be holding the search until probably mid-year. At that point, you'll have a better general idea where you're going with super dense search, as that was mentioned at the last meeting, as well as we'll have a pretty good idea how this was working out. And then we'll get, we will get a, we'll be able to, the pool will also include business managers who are currently employed but would like a change in venue. And so that's a much larger pool than what we're getting right now, which is a lot of people who have no experience, just got licensed, that kind of thing. So that's where I'm at. So I guess I put it to all of you that that's what I recommend we do. I have a draft contract that I have sent to Russ Duprey, our attorney, to review. He's already given it the ones over. Already, I checked my email before walking in. He said it looks good to enter a three-year, a three-month contract with the business solution. So you do have the ability to go into executive session if you need to talk about back and forth on contracts, but right now that's best for you to decide if you need to go to that benefit.
Just wondering if you or anybody else could check into the references at all?
I contacted multiple schools. I also talked to, off the committee's recommendation, I probably was going to do it anyway, but I also talked to Tom Scanlon.
Oh, right.
And he's worked with them extensively. He kind of gave me feedback on the ups and downs. To be blunt, the ups and downs of it are, of the company is, the service is as good as the person you get assigned to.
Right.
That Andy, who presented to us, is an absolute superstar. And there's been, you know, Tom has worked with multiple districts, and some of them have gone back to the traditional model, some have stayed with it. And he said, I think the primary thing is who you get assigned. Right now, I talked with Andy today, just talking about this moves forward, what's it look like, transition, that kind of thing. He has some people already in mind that he is going to, one does not have school business experience, one of them does, and that's the kind of team he's putting forward. So it's not locked in stone yet, but that's where we're at right now. But both have finance backgrounds, in finance and public industry. A public government one's, I believe, is that a, just retired from a public utility company, so.
And it looked like he was still going to play a kind of a
He's going to play an integral role.
Integral role, at least his three months.
Yep.
So a couple of points is remember, you know, he did say that if you're at all dissatisfied with the assigned person, that don't hesitate to request a change. It's better to do that sooner rather than later. Number two, it's just, I'm just wondering about the interface between the public contracting thing, because if the musical game, if the musical chairs doesn't really start until the spring, then we know that we're going to have to put this out to bid at some point? And when that takes place, are we then bound to accept a low bidder that's qualified? And is it a possibility that we would have these guys for six months and have to switch to somebody else to get us through the last three months and that sort of thing? That's what I'm wondering.
I suppose you're correct. You could do that, I mean, with any bid, you can write the scope of the bid, so there's not many. I mean, when I had, when I had to send this out for quotes, I had to send it to individual people because there's no other group like this currently. So, yeah, there is that risk. And I'll be honest, we don't have a lot of options on the table right now. So, and I also think, based on the fact that we don't have a lot of options on the table, the price that was given to us was still very good. You're looking at $92,000 without benefits, is less than the current, is the current person in there. So we will have, we'll have some savings to, that will be able to apply to that kind of, to the business management position if we move forward to a search. We'll have some money there to move around with. I mean, there is, and, you know, obviously, I'm nervous about the, as anyone should be when you go to a new type of system. I'm not kind of going in this blind and saying this is going to be absolutely wonderful. I'm going as guarded as the concerns of some faces I see and such. But I think this is the best. This is my recommendation to you, is that this is what we should do moving forward. I ran it by enough professionals, other superintendents, retired superintendents, as I kind of explained last time, and more so since then. And I think we have a pretty good vision of what they provide and what their limitations are. And, you know, we're going to have to stay on them. Patty does, did a lot of things in the business manager role that I've already had a conversation with. That's a detention. Except, you know.
You gotta have somebody to supervise.
Exactly. Well, then I have to stay after and do it. I'm not doing that. All right. But, you know, I've had conversations with him also. Patty did a lot of things outside of the district business manager roles. And I've had a very honest, he's going to be very clear about what he is and can and can't do, and I'm going to have to look at how we fill that void.
And that was my sort of, my next part is, what about the, all the, the, she was the transportation director.
Mm-hmm.
Who's the trans food, yeah, right. So there's all these other things, I mean, those titles get applied to other people in the building? Do they go to this guy? Do they all?
Depends on what it is. It depends on what it is. And what, they may get to buy it up. They might get, you know, where I take on part of it, but, you know, delegate parts of the paperwork portions of it. You know, that, that is the hardest part, and that's the, you know, the, my frustrations with being in this predicament.
That's well said.
That's well said.
I checked with Barbara Pink, and the people in town hall that just kind of give us some feedback too in this three months, that they're, you know, how they interact, and a lot of it is kind of requesting information as personnel leader or something like that. So I just ask her to kind of keep an eye out too and let us know what they're seeing, good, bad, or different.
Right.
Just to give you guys feedback on, you know, us all feedback on what we're doing with the town.
And talking about communication, I did change the rough, the rough draft of the scope, and I added a second day. Everybody said one day a week. I asked for two days a week and let them know that. He said realistically early on, they'll probably be in three, three days or more, that the two would be the minimum. But I did double that number because I just felt that, I felt nervous about it. And so, and so a little bit more comfortable having somebody twice a week or two people there.
I got a question. Since probably every single committee member here, once, twice, or many times, have gone to Patty for questions and answers, how's that going to, how's that going to work with these guys? I mean, should we go, should we, should we have committee members go through chairs that go through these new people? Or are we going to let the committee members just, if they have a question, call them up on the day that they could be here and try to get some questions answered? But every one of us have talked to Patty one way or another many times, so are these guys going to get bombarded by phone calls?
Well, I mean, I mean, you bring up a good question overall about this, this group, all the committees, committees combined and such, and what is the, what are the norms or the rules of business of the committee? Can all 24 call the business manager at any time to ask any question? Should be funneled through the superintendent or, you know, CC the superintendent so that, you know, if you're going through, because it kind of gets, the business director is kind of a in-between. They will be given an email address, and we're, you know, it's one of the things on the agenda when I talked with Andrew today. And I said, if moving forward, but I wanted to be able to see how this would unfold, whether or not you do one email address or two. But because they're kind of two people overseeing, overseeing things, you want to make sure that they're both, email one, and one's not working on it this week, and, you know, that kind of thing. So either they're going to be linked emails, or there's going to be one email. We'll have to figure that out. But you'd email them, you know, that kind of thing, I think. There's also available by phone. But I think that comes down to, I think, again, I'm looking at, while I know they're going to be available for your questions and that sort of thing, I also think that the committee needs to talk about at some point, and it's not on tonight's agenda, but what are the, what are the rules? Because you can, you could ask for a lot of things that would take hours of time going on a, on a personal investigation of something, and what authority other than being, you know what I mean? It's not the group looking for something, and so that can get dangerous. And so you kind of want to put parameters in place so that those things don't happen, that you work as committee, but not. But also, you have to have available transparency and available information. So it's that kind of catch and, catch and back.
Just to echo that, I think through the chairs would be great, because, and obviously CC you, but just to limit, because they're only going to have so much time, and if we load them with a lot of questions, it limits how much they can come up for us. They could see what on the front.
I think the gentleman mentioned that he was going to get copied on all the emails that went to his people. So he's, he's going to have a good handle on who's asking what and whatever, because obviously, if he's got green people, he's going to want to make sure that they give the right answer. But, you know, I do follow what you're talking about, but, you know, I don't think anybody bothers to tidy that many times with questions.
I'm just bringing up as a whole, you know, when you have this many people governing, you should have some sort of structure of going through either your local chair or the region and
Or the superintendent.
Or the superintendent. You know, it's, it's the same, it's the same question of, you know, and I said this, you know, immediately, I said this during the original interview, having 24 bosses, I mean, if each one of you called me twice a week, that's half my week. You know what I mean? So, or, you know, so that kind of, and so, but at the same time, I'm also, do need to report to all of you in your constituents of each year, you know, towns. So it's a balancing act, and so to have some sort of guidelines, we can think about that.
Can you remind us the expectations on the management of the staff here? Because I don't, in this reindeer scope, I didn't really see anything related to how they're going to work with the current staff.
So they are going to work with the current staff. Personnel issues will be, will be referred to me. But they will have the asking of the staff to produce as their, their team.
So have you talked to the staff?
I have.
What is the feeling there about this?
They are, so I met with them, and collectively, they're looking forward to the change. And that's kind of, that's where they're at, they're at there. They, there wasn't a lot of, they were happy that there was some sort of solution placed, some relief there. And they, they're, I'm sure they're anxious a little bit, but at the same time, I think they're, yeah, it's a new beginning kind of deal.
And they're going to help, they're going to help these new people.
They're going to help.
They're going to have questions, and Paula and everybody else will probably can answer some of the questions for them too, so.
And will they do the evaluations for the staff?
No.
No.
You'll do it.
No, it'll be similar, it'll be similar to how department heads work. They give, they give information input into the evaluation, but don't actually do evaluation.
And I don't know who wrote this, but wait, they spelled wrong.
It is tough to spell, you know.
Good catch, Kane.
I think it was just to see if anyone would catch it.
No. Every time it comes up, every time it comes up, down at the bottom on number seven.
Sculpture.
Number seven.
Yep.
Do you have number one?
Yeah.
Number one, number seven. Right at the bottom. Good to have another set of ours.
Bob's got a little question.
I always think that what's going to end up happening is, these people are going to delineate staff certain tasks that they're expected to complete. So that when the people from the outside come in on the two days a week, they have the information they need to go forward. So there'll be more of a delineation of the particular tasks reached for these, what they're expected to accomplish. They may have a problem in complying with some of that.
I think there could be a dozen problems that we can kind of, we can go through tonight, but
But, you know, it's something that's going to happen. Got to happen to make this thing work.
So I have a question on number six on the contract. It says the bidder will be expected to have a representative, representative, sorry, attend at least one school committee meeting per month for each school district. And I'm not thinking the towns are going to like that, because if they, the four towns are considered one school district, does that mean that they are going to have to just go to Conway one month and then?
Hold on.
That's not how it's written. It says at least one school committee meeting per month for each school district. The town of
They're all separate districts.
I thought it was Union 38 was one district.
That's only the appointment of the superintendent and certain staff. Staff that are
They're all separate, own committees. So each other one is their own district?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm good.
So just, going back to the governance and interacting with finance, with the business director, I think what Maske recommends is a year-round budget subcommittee. And that was the one thing that we didn't, that wasn't put out as an option, but budgets, normally, the budget subcommittee doesn't convene until
January.
January. And that, to me, is the thing that might be rethought about this whole getup, that it might be to everybody's benefit to gin it up a little bit earlier.
Why, we see what their recommendations do.
What's that?
See what their request is relative to budgeting.
Yeah, that's true too, but
You're trying to get the butt earlier to try to get, you know
Yeah.
So what you have to do is make it Billy's idea.
Well, sure, but, but, I mean, there's, there's a lot of good stuff that happens through that committee, and gets a lot of questions answered, and a lot of stuff clarified in the sooner. So that's that.
Okay. Anybody else have any? Peter?
I might as well throw it out. In our town, when we have a change in the folks running the finances, we do an audit. Is there any consideration to
I talked with, I talked with Tom Scanlon regarding that. He says we're going to be auditing you either way, and so
I mean, it's obviously where the change is one month into a new year, where there hasn't been so much activity and so on, but can it be built into the audit that they do that somehow there's, I don't know, I don't know the details.
So because Patty is leaving at year-end.
Right.
Okay. Even though we're into this next year, she's just been working, besides opening up the books for, for the 19 school year, she's closing out all the books for 18. So when we bring in our auditors, as we always do, they will be auditing the closing of Patty's work here.
Okay.
So he said nicely, Tom, do we need to bring you in separately? He said, no, just any kind of errors or discrepancies will be found in our audit when we do it normally for those fiscal years. If she was leaving mid-year, that would be a valid question, but because she's closing out those books, that's, we take care of that. But I do ask, that's a good question.
Anybody else have any questions? David, I can see you have a question.
Not at all.
Not at all?
Not at all.
All right.
Mary?
It might be a separate conversation, I'm going to stick with this first, but just letting us know the situation with Patty and where we're at with everything, what she's done, or stuff that still has to be done.
Yeah.
Has she gone this year?
Sure. When you ask, I put it on hold, but I can just answer the question.
Okay.
I have, I have contracted with Patty to do 20 hours more of work to close out Frontier's books because they're not done. I talked with Tom, and I also talked with, gosh, why do I?
Don Scott.
Thank you. Well, I don't know when, every time Don Scott's name comes up, I could lose it. I also talked with Don Scott, and basically, based on the predicament, it is a valued 75 dollars an hour not to exceed 20 hours to close out her books, because she's not done. The towns are done, the elementary schools' books are done, but that's what she estimates around amount of time she's, she's going to do. So she's going to work around the weekends. I think she said over two weekends, we'll probably get it done. So based on, talking with, you know, Don, and with Tom, kind of said, hey, I'm in this particular situation, does this sound all right? Because to me, this is a little bit outside of what I've done before. And they said, that's absolutely, that's, you're getting it to a fair price, and you'd rather have her close out the books, and bring someone else, you're going to pay twice as much, because they're going to have to figure out exactly where things are to close them out. So, you know, we, we, while Patty's, you know, leaving sudden and disappointing, you know, it kept things amicable between us to have a healthy finish, so that's where we're at.
Can we get our year-end number? If you say the schools are done at some point.
Technically, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we hired management solutions for a period of three months, $8,000 a month, for accounting services and business services as outlined in the quote.
You can't second. I'm not second. Already seconded.
Judy's seconded.
But you just put her name. I didn't hear the motion though.
Vote that we hired
Came up for three months, it is $8,000.
Yeah, as, as outlined in their charter letter and in the question proposals.
Who has assigned the contract?
We authorized the superintendent to sign all of our statements. And I think George said he was going to make sure the final thing that's satisfied with the
Add, add as recommended by administration.
I don't want to complain.
Let's find here, any more questions?
What was the as recommended?
By the interim superintendent. She's got enough.
I got enough.
For Frontier, all in favor?
Is that eight?
I will entertain same motion from the Union.
I would move that same exact paragraph, please.
I'll second it.
I've had multiple seconds here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Take Michael.
Any further discussion?
She is doing the
I just wrote it. I will catch up with her.
Having that discovery
All in favor?
Oh, votes, it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
Have you been working on getting us together? Have you, I mean, I'm not saying you don't have a lot to do, but this, this, this joint, so we can do one meeting? That is like a really good blank look.
I miss answering the question. Am I looking at regionalizing the district? Yes.
No, 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 no. We had a conversation about
We don't have to do two separate motions, two separate minutes, two separate
So I'm going to take that as a no, I haven't gotten to that yet.
Right.
No, I haven't. Well, I have to some degree. Technically, you can have one set of minutes, which we've translated, but you still have to do your separate votes, just like it was done. That's a lot smoother than it used to be.
No, I'm here to improve the section.
That's it.
Yes, there is. So we're going to go into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, 21A7, the Act under the authority of General or Special Law. Federal Grant A requirement, approval executive session minutes from June 18 this year and 26 of this year, 2008 to 2018. Second. We've got to do a roll call first.
So he seconded.
Judy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yep.
Bob?
Yes.
Libya?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And Lynn?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will also make the motion to enter executive session pursuant to what he said. With the added caveat that we're inviting one non-voting member to join us, Phil Cantor. So we have a motion and a second. Trevor?
Roll call?
You don't have to wipe.
Oh, he's already in.
Unenjoyed. I thought you were.
We don't want him, but, Michael. Hey.
We have to say, is that a, is that a no-no too?
No, until.
Peter?
Yes.
We're not in yet.
David?
Yep.
Kenneth? Yes. Trevor?
Yes.
Katie?
Yep.
Bob?
Yeah.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Did I miss anyone? I don't think so.
No.
I just wanted to say that I'm impressed by the way that our interim superintendent has dealt with this business manager situation, and the speed and diligence, and really looking at all aspects of this, have all been handled and impressed me in a first-class way, and I want to thank them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have Conway warrants as well.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yeah, a motion adjourned.
Still sign them because Elaine lost. Frontier, need a motion adjourned?
So who?
That's for the chairs meeting. Mary?
Yep.
All in favor?